Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the monthly meeting of Wycomico County Board of Ed. Just to let you know, the proceedings are taped and livestreamed, so should be aware of that. We'll begin as we always do with the Pledge to the Flag, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Hanlon on that front.
I'll turn it over to MJ.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
So it's my pleasure to introduce everyone to MJ Phillips, who is a 5th grader at North Salisbury. You did a great job to have been selected by your principal to come and represent North Salisbury here tonight. It's quite an honor, and you did a great job, so we know you must be a great student. Would you introduce your father and your other guest tonight?
My dad, Matthew Phillips, and Mr. Harris, my principal.
So this is a certificate recognizing you for what you did tonight for the board.
Thank you. Okay, 3.2, approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 3.3. Have a moment of silence. Over the last month, we lost two of our educators from our education family. Penelope Barelli was a retired instructional assistant at both East Salisbury and Prince Street. And Clarence, actually Matt McKinley, I was his next door neighbor my whole life. I grew up with his children. Retired instructional supervisor from Central Office. So please acknowledge their passing in your own way. Thank you. So 3.4, student representatives to the board. Let's begin with Tiana Staten, who's at the table with us from Mardella High School. Welcome, this is your first meeting, we're glad to have you. What's happening at Mardella?
Alright, good evening, everybody. I'm excited to fill you in on what's going on at Mardella. Over the summer, Ms. Childs held her first ever college application day on August 2nd. The trend art was amazing, and about a quarter of the senior class showed up to take advantage of the resources available to help with their applications. Ms. Childs walked us through how to use Common App and how Navions can assist us in our application process. The event ran from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and in my opinion, was crucial to getting an early start on college applications. And to begin the year, Mardella held a back-to-school barbecue for all their students and the students' families. Students had an opportunity to receive schedules, practice opening their lockers, and meeting their teachers. And afterwards, the students and their families could enjoy snow cones and hot dogs while socializing with their new classmates. The following Tuesdays, or yeah, the following Tuesday, our new members of the Warrior family had their first day at school. The 6th graders had had the halls all to themselves so they could take time to navigate their new terrain. Then on Wednesday, the rest of our students joined for their first day of school. Everyone is getting right back into the rhythm of their classes and have an optimistic outlook towards the rest of the year. And today, the SGA held its first meeting. Today's meeting had a record turnout, almost doubling the usual amount. The group began planning for the homecoming pep rally, soccer game, and dance. Our theme for this year's dance is the Met Gala. And lots of brainstorming for the homecoming festivals, or festivities took place today. And we're excited not only for homecoming, but for what we can accomplish throughout the year.
Thank you very much. So representing Parkside High School, and then come up to this table where there's a microphone, Gavin Dennis. Welcome Gavin.
So I'd like to start by saying thank you. Thank you to the Board of Education for our new renovations to our school. We're finally all back in one building, which greatly unites our Ram fam. And then to speak upon recent news here at Parkside, I'd like to begin with our freshman orientation day. This year, our freshman orientation theme was entitled, "The One Where They're Freshmen," which is a spin-off of the hit television show Friends. And then during that day, incoming freshmen attended team-building exercises that helped them join our family, our Ram fam, as we like to say. This day was greatly helped by our Ram ambassadors who gave up their day, their last day of summer to help the incoming freshmen to join our family. Not only that, but the day was very helpful and helped the freshmen understand our climate here at Parkside. But speaking of climate at Parkside, the SGA and I have a few concerns which include water bottles and dress code, which we will discuss and address at our upcoming meeting this Thursday. And then some upcoming events that we have going on at Parkside is that SGA and I will very soon release the theme of homecoming. We have been given many hints to the school through our social media page. But how we will announce the theme will be discussed at our upcoming meeting. And then also, I'd just like to say thank you for your interest and look forward to providing these monthly reports in the future.
We thank you. And representing James M. Bennett this evening, Lauren Ila. Welcome Lauren.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Hanlon, Chairman Mr. Fitzgerald, and members of the board. My name is Lauren Ila, I am the Executive Treasurer of the J&amp;B Student Government Association. The J&amp;B Executive President, Young Jule Lee, was unable to attend tonight's meeting because she's taking a class right now. But she will be here for the next monthly meeting. So our students start off this school year full with lots of school spirit. More than 40 of our returning students used their precious last day of summer break to help come help the freshmen on their freshman first day. To start off their high school right, and to start their high school year right and happily. Through school tours and exploring club tables, our freshmen were able to adapt to high school quickly and get ready for their upcoming days. Although our returning students missed their summer break, many of them are excited to come back to school. And under our wonderful staff members this year, students of all grades had a great and safe school day. Many fall sports have also started their season, and our J&amp;B athletes are very positive and confident that they'll make this year the best one yet. As J&amp;B goes into our second week of school, our students are very happy to participate in various school clubs and influence our students and our community positively. And our students and staff are working very hard to make this school year our best. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think our representative with Wy-Hi was able to be here, okay. But it is Reese Chang, I want to recognize that person. Thank you for the student reports. 3.5, public comments, I don't have any in front of me. Okay, 3.6, superintendent's report, Dr. Hanlon.
Yes, good evening. I have a few items to share with the board and with the community. We're gonna begin, Dr. Briggs, if you want to come to the table, sharing with you our Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program results from those assessments that students took last spring. We've recently received those results, and Dr. Briggs will be sharing them with you.
Chairman Fitzgerald, Dr. Hanlon, and other board members, thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening. As Dr. Hanlon mentioned, we're gonna be sharing a recap of the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program results from this past school year. Before I begin, I do want to turn over my left shoulder and introduce a few key people with us tonight. In the second row, we have Mr. Tom Freddy, who is our data analyst. Ms. Karen Parsons, who is our Supervisor of Assessment and Accountability. Mr. Julie Dill, Supervisor of Elementary Mathematics. Ms. Paige McSorley, Supervisor of English Language Arts, grades 6 to 12. Right behind her is Dr. Hall, Supervisor of Reading for our elementary school grades. Mr. Todd, sitting very quietly, a couple rows back, our Supervisor of Mathematics, sitting in grade 6 to 12. And next to him is Dr. Bonnie Ennis, our Supervisor of School Improvement. So it's just a great team. Those guys work under the direction of Ms. Ruth Malone, Director of Curriculum Professional Development. And they work in conjunction with all of our building principals, obviously, who work under the direction of Dr. Susan Jones, our Director of Elementary Ed, and Mr. Don Brady, our Director of Secondary Ed. So as a team, we all work together to support the critical work that our teachers do each day and that our principals are doing every day to get the best out of our students. So just a quick recap for those senior board members, it'll be a review. For some newer board members, some of this will be new. Our students are assessed through MCAP at the end of grades 3 through 8. And then again, for Algebra 1 in high school and some middle school classes. But Algebra 1, and then English 10. Those students receive a cut score and are placed in one of these five levels, ranging from obviously not meeting expectations on the left-hand side, all the way to exceeding expectations on the right. I do want to point out for Algebra 1 and English 10, that for Algebra 1 and English 10, levels 3, 4, and 5 are the graduation requirements, okay? That's for current students who had previously taken those assessments, and for those high school students who will take the assessments this year. I do want to go ahead and point out, looking towards the future, that as we currently sit here tonight from the state board, that next year's rising 9th graders, so those students who are currently sitting in 8th grade, for them and beyond, the cut score will move up to level 4 and 5. So again, as of right now, to meet the graduation requirement, just a 3, 4, or 5 is needed. For next year's rising 9th graders, they will have to get a 4 or 5 to graduate. I'll be honest to say, there is some discussion at the state board, so we're keeping an eye on that and obviously giving our input as well. So for this part, you're gonna see, we're gonna go through four different sections. We're gonna look at mathematics for grades 3 through 8 combined. Then we're gonna look at Algebra 1, and then we'll look at English Language Arts, grades 3 through 8, and then we'll look at English 10. So for this first slide, again, this is for all grades combined, 3 through 8. So that's our elementary and middle school students specific to their mathematics assessment. We did see, as you can tell, a slight decline in the percentage of students that were meeting and exceeding expectations. Obviously, that's not what we want. It was interesting to note that that same trend, those same patterns, we saw across the state. Dr. Hanlon and I were actually watching the state board meeting live two weeks ago today, when Dr. Steiner, who sits on the state board and is a Johns Hopkins professor, he alluded to the fact that not only is the entire state seeing this trend, this decline in mathematics scores, but actually the entire nation. Just yesterday morning, I was reading an article about New Jersey mathematics scores, and they're reporting the same thing. They are also seeing that same decline. So Mrs. Dill, Mr. Todd, myself, Dr. Hanlon, we're all collaborating with our counterparts across the state to try to have a better understanding of what's going on. And then as we do in all our content areas, we're working with our teachers to look to improve across the board. The next slide, and you'll see this for the different groups, is how it's broken out by subgroup. So not only do we look at all students, but we do look at the various subgroups. And this chart is showing the percentage of students who are in those level 4 and 5. One thing you will not see on here, but I think it's important to point out, is that specifically our 6th grade students. Our 6th grade students improved the percentage for the second straight year. So although as a district, for all grade levels, we did go down in 6th grade, we did see an increase for the second straight year. And our 7th graders actually scored above the state average. Full disclosure, we're normally slightly below the state average in most grade levels, but in 7th grade this past year, we were above the state average. This next slide is very interesting in the fact that, again, when we were watching the state board presentation and we just pulled it from there, this map shows, if you look at the key on the left-hand side there, the dark green would show a district that greatly increased the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectation. Again, that was level 4 and 5. A light green would reflect those districts who just improved, but maybe not as much. And let me state the obvious for everybody in here, there's no green on the map. The gray there is obviously no change, and then a light shade of pink, where if you see a slight decrease, and then a darker shade of red there would be a more drastic decrease. And so as mentioned earlier, again, this is mathematics for 3 to 8, we did see a slight decrease, as did most of the state. And overall, as a state, they did see a decrease as well. So those three sides you just saw, you're gonna see those three repeated now for a different assessment. So next, moving on from grades 3 to 8, we're gonna look at Algebra 1. And this looks a little more complicated, and let me show you why or point out to you. If you start on the left-hand side, you'll see all Wycomico for the first three bars, for the years 15, 16, and 17. During those years, the students just needed to take the algebra assessment to meet the graduation requirement. So you did not have to, if you failed it or did not pass it, you did not have to retake it again. So if you look on the right-hand side for the years 18 and 19, to make sure we were comparing apples to apples, you'll see Wycomico 18 FTTT, and then Wycomico 19 FTTT. That stands for First Time Test Takers. So that we could look to see how we were doing as a district, we wanted to look at those who were just taking it for the first time. And those students who did not meet the graduation requirement, did not receive that 3, 4, or 5, they had to retake the assessment. And those are captured in the all Wycomico bars. And similar to grades 3 through 8, we did see a slight decrease. I'll admit, going back to what I said at the beginning, it is a little alarming or concerning. So if you look at the Wycomico 19 FTTT, that we have about 54% of our students currently passing the assessment with a 3, 4, or 5, alright, so 54%. If we just looked at those scoring a 4 or 5, that number would reduce to about 27, 28%. And so that is concerning and something we're monitoring closely. Again, similar, you do see the trends here for the various subgroups. And again, this is for students who scored in the levels 3 to 5, who met that graduation requirement. A few subgroups did see a slight increase, but overall, the majority of the subgroups did decline. Similar to 3 through 8, we have another map that shows how the entire state did. While we would love to be green, we're not, but we're not red either. And so you see that the only county that did receive an increase there is Kent. That is a very small population, as you can imagine. So we'll continue to work on increasing those Algebra 1 scores, which will hopefully directly positively correlate to increased graduation rate. So similar to those slides that we just did, we'll now look at Ela. So this is for Ela, grades 3 through 8. Similar math, we did mirror the state. The state saw a slight increase across the board in grades 3 through 8. We also saw that slight increase of students who were meeting and exceeding expectations. If you look at it as a subgroup data, again, most subgroups either maintained or improved, which we were happy to see. Also not on the chart, but worth noting is that our grades 5 and 6 both showed the most growth throughout the county, with all middle school grades showing a combined increase. So we were happy to see that. Looking back at the entire state now, for again, Ela grades 3 through 8, although we did show an increase, it was not a statistically significant increase. That's why we're showing it as gray and not the light green. This did jump out, Dr. Hanlon and I, not to put words in our mouth, but when we were watching this, that the entire basically Lower Shore is in the gray where the rest of the state is in the green. I don't have an answer, so please don't ask me a question. However, it's worth noting, it's worth noting. And then lastly, we're gonna look at the MCAP for Ela grades 10. And again, this is the graduation requirement for our high school students. We were very pleased to see, and if you'll focus on the Wycomico 18 FTTT and the Wycomico 19 FTTT, we saw increases at every single one of levels 3, 4, and 5. We saw an increase from 15.5 to 15.7 in level 5, almost a 4% increase in level 4, and then just a slight increase there in level 3 as well. So we saw an increase across the board. And again, that's very positive, because that means more students are meeting the graduation requirement the first time, which then requires less remediation and hopefully less bridge projects for them to meet that graduation requirement. The subgroup data reflects that 5% increase. Similar to a category mentioned earlier, we were above the state average for English 10. And again, most subgroups showed improvement. And then our last map for the night, which is a good way to end it, since we're in dark green. That's just for you, Mr. Malone. So for the English 10, you'll see where the entire state was kind of a mixed, more of a mixed bag for English 10. But proud to say that we're in that English 10, or excuse me, that dark green's showing that grade increase for that. And obviously, that was just an overview of the data. Maryland Report Card has a wealth of information. You can look at it county by grade level, you can look at it by school, a wealth of information. So I would encourage anybody who wants to dig a little bit deeper into both district-wide data and school-level data to go to marylandreportcard.gov, and there's some great information there. That's what our team utilizes to work with, again, at the school level, with our math PD coaches, our Ela PD coaches, our administrative teams. And then all of that is to help our teachers. They're the ones doing the critical work every day, and that's our job to support them in every way possible. I stand for any questions you might have.
Do they have any questions for Dr. Briggs and his team? Okay, it must have been outstanding, huh?
I can just assure you-
Let's go with that, thank you.
-that we are digging into the data deeply, down with teacher groups and professional development coaches, and of course, our supervisors to continue to improve and make progress.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to your team as well, thank you.
So the next item that I have to share really with the community is a conversation that we, among the board and staff, have been having. Has to do with some information that we thought would be valuable as we go into our budget session for the community to understand the requirements that come to us through legislation, but without financial support. And we found it quite interesting, the total dollar amount that this has resulted in. This, I want to show you at the top, however, that this indicates that just because there are items of legislation on this list over the course of the last few years, does not necessarily mean that we agree or disagree with those pieces of legislation. It just simply means that we are required in these different areas to implement different initiatives in our school system, and there is not funding that's associated with it. And therefore, funding that we receive from the county needs to be spent towards these rather than other things that we may want to add to our plan. So it's just a brainstormed list from staff that has been shared with the board and wanted to have an opportunity to share it with the community. And of course, if the board has any questions or comments that you want to make about the list, we can certainly do that.
Five years unfunded mandate would pay for the new Beaver Run in school. Just to put it something in perspective. Dr. Hanlon-
Could these figures, could this paper be shared with our county council members? Certainly. Okay. Dr. Briggs, want to share a little bit that's happening with grants this past month?
The month of August was once again beneficial for us in regard to grant funding, as we received seven grants totaling over 675,000, don't want to shortchange this. Most of that funding was from MSD for Title 1, Ready for Kindergarten, and the Lead Hire Project, with additional funds coming from the Chesapeake Bay Trust and the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. We're greatly appreciative of these funds to support us in meeting the needs of our diverse student population. Thank you.
And then last but not least, Mr. Butler, extra mile awards.
So this month, and by the way, I have a little cough, so hopefully I don't do this during this announcement. So we're gonna do our extra mile award, and this award goes to each month, two of our employees from Wycomico County Public Schools who actually go the extra mile. They do something above their usual jobs and just do an amazing job representing Wycomico County. So for this month, we're gonna start with Mr. James Collins. And Mr. Collins, if you'll come on down, James. Everybody knows James. And here's the great thing, is that you talk about going the extra mile, he literally does. He's a delivery driver for Wycomico County Public Schools, but Marie Ash nominated him because there was a time, I think last month, when an order was supposed to be delivered to Northgate, but it actually ended up here at 101 Long Avenue. It then made its way over to Northgate, and Marie was like, "It doesn't belong here either." Well, James, in the rain, he took the order and delivered it to where it was supposed to be. And that's just something he does every single day. You don't have to ask him, he just goes about and does the extra mile. So James, we congratulate you on being an extra mile award winner for the month of August. Because we also have a plaque for you as well. We're gonna have you take your picture right now with Dr. Hanlon and Mr. Fitzgerald. Congratulations, Mr. Collins, we appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Our second extra mile award winner goes to Amy Rhodes. Amy, come on down. So Amy is a guidance counselor at Wycomico High School. And this summer, she was very instrumental in working with an entire new guidance staff, right? So she had to help train them, she also helped the school with their master schedule, and she also did a lot of professional development and training other guidance counselors. This summer, that doesn't even include her normal work. So she was really, really instrumental, going the extra mile, not thinking about her own self, but just wanting to make sure everybody else was in place and understood what they were supposed to do with the new guidance staff at Wycomico High School. And for that, you are our extra mile award winner for the month of August. And we also have this plaque for you. And Mr. Green, come- And Mr. Green, come on down, who is the principal, new principal at Wycomico High School. Amy, thank you very much, congratulations on being our Extra Mile Award winner.
So my wife always cautions me when I go off-topic or off-agenda, but we're safe with this, I think, so this is not on the agenda. But we want to present something to Dr. Hanlon. This is someone who leads our school system by example every day and is out here presenting awards to everyone, very well-deserved awards. But this is a good award for Dr. Hanlon as an example of, that you set for everyone. Not only do you work hard every day, you come to work every day. So this perfect attendance, this honor is bestowed upon Donna C. Hanlon by the Board of Education of Wycomico County in recognition of perfect attendance for the school year 2018 to 19. Congratulations. So it's not to be taken lightly, that's a very nice award. We appreciate your dedication and your service. It's fun to catch someone off-guard.
You did, you definitely did, and somebody thanked me.
We're now, is that, okay. We've got all, okay. 4.1, approval of open session minutes. You had those in advance, it's the special meeting of 8:06 and 8:13. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes at this time.
So moved.
So a sec. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Five is the consent items, 5.1 through 5.4 are consent items. You had those in advance to read. I assume any questions you had were answered, or if you have any now, we're open to those. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Upon the recommendation of the School Building Commission and the Superintendent, is there a motion to approve the construction documents for the Beaver Run Elementary Project as reviewed and revised by Board of Education, request at the September 5th Board Work Session, and authorized submission to the state for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Diesel, Mrs. Ashby?
I appreciate the excitement.
There you go.
Good evening, Chairman Fitzgerald, Vice Chair Mr. Malone, and Dr. Hanlon. There's been much progress on the design and pre-construction efforts regarding the replacement Beaver Run Elementary School. The next step is to submit the construction documents to the Department of General Services in preparation for bidding trade contracts next month. The construction documents and associated project budget was reviewed by the Design and Construction Management Team with the School Building Commission on August 29th, as well as the Board in a work session on September 5th. A new 98,193 square-foot building will be constructed directly behind the existing 58,893 square-foot building and will support a projected enrollment of 650 students by combining the current Beaver Run School and the Wycomico Early Learning Center, serving Y3 through Grade 2. The project is on track to meet the Maryland High Performance Building Act's requirements via the International Green Construction Code, option with various sustainable and energy-efficient strategies such as daylighting combined with LED lighting controls, selective use of materials with recycled content, VRF mechanical system, and associated building commissioning. There was an overall project budget savings of $186,000 between design, development, and construction documents, including a projected $1.3 million reduction in construction funding requests to the county in FY 2022. There is currently $7.3 million in construction funding available from the state, and a $7 million bond sale is pending with the county for FY 2020. If approved by the Board tonight, the construction documents will be submitted to DGS this week. The goal is to break ground by March 1st, 2020, and the new building opening for the 2022-2023 school year and the remaining phase site work completed by December 2022. And I stand for any questions you may have.
Questions for Mrs. Ashby? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Ashby.
Thank you. You okay if I stay here?
Yes.
Okay.
6.2. Is there a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 2021 to 2026 Capital Improvement Plan, which was reviewed and discussed during the August 27, 2019 Work Session for submission to the County Executive and the State? It's a motion? Is there a second? Mrs. Ashby again?
The Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Improvement Plan represents the second part of the Board's overall capital improvement program. The first part of the program consists of the Educational Facilities Master Plan, which is a long-range plan that prioritizes the Board's facility needs and was previously approved in June. The capital plan establishes project budgets by linking master plan priorities with anticipated local and state funding. It essentially represents the funding requests needed to support the Board's master plan. A draft of the FY 2021 CIP was reviewed at the August 27th Work Session, and the final plan includes approximately 94 projects, many of which address multiple systems within a building or an area of a building. Some of the projects represent an initiative that would affect multiple buildings or other facility needs over time. The FY 2021 Top 3 Priorities represent a total request of $9.8 million to the county and $11.7 million to the state. The replacement Beaver Run project remains the Board's top capital improvement priority. If approved by the Board tonight, the CIP will be submitted to the County Executive on or before September 30th, and the Interagency Commission on Public School Construction on or before October 4th. The approved CIP will also be available on the Board's website after the state's submission, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Are there questions about the capital improvement plan? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Thank you, Mrs. Ashby.
Thank you for your time.
So 6.3 is for information, and 7.1, Board Members Reports. So we'll start with Mr. Palmer, if he's agreeable to that. The chairman has spoken.
I could sit here and give you a report on all the stuff that I've done over time and everything I did, all the schools I've visited, but I'm not going to do that. What I want to do is I want to leave you with a memory that makes me smile. And now, if I think of something that's kind of sad, I think of this little memory and it makes me feel good. And it happened at Delmar Elementary. And after going through the school, I came out of the school and I was walking down the, that overhang area where the kids wait for the buses in the rain, and there was this little girl, small, I mean, a little bit above my knees and they're not very high off the ground line yet. So she walked just a little past me, and then she turned around and looked up at me and she, she held up something and she says, "I have something." And I looked at it and I said, "Well, what do you have?" And she said, "I have this." So I asked her, I said, "Well, what is this?" And she said, "Something." So I said, "Okay, we're going around in circles here." So I said, "What do you do with something?" She says, "I do this." And she held up, it was a little plastic container of some type of lotion, and she touched the top of it like that, and she went, and she went like that, you know, around her face. And her mom says, "It's some face cream that she, that she can put on." So the little girl smiled, and then she, she turned and started to walk away, and she says, "I've got something." And then she just walked on down the sidewalk, and that stuck me. You know, that was pretty neat.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Murray?
All right, thank you, sir. I first would like to thank all of the employees, all staff of the county getting our schools ready. I think we had an excellent first week of school. I think things were well-prepared, students were, I'm like Mr. Palmer, we visited a lot of things. One of the things that was really special was the new teacher kickoff and watching their enthusiasm. I thought that was fantastic. I also certainly enjoyed, on August 25th, at the Civic Center, we had the Fresh Start with school supplies and the community coming out and everyone supporting that. And that's what it takes, is our community and all of us working together. I thought our kickoff on the 29th with Ron Clark was especially, a special event. Everywhere I go in the county, I hear about it, and I hear about it from people that are non-educators. So that tells me that our educators are talking about it, are enthused in sharing that with other people, and that was special, that was excellent. I certainly enjoyed visiting the schools during open house. Unfortunately, I didn't get to all of them, but I did manage the 14, and so that kept me pretty busy that weekend. But I enjoyed it, watching the students come in with their parents, meeting their teachers and things of that nature. All the schools were very welcoming and looked good and things, so we should get off to a good school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Chairman Fitzgerald?
Well, I thought you were going to leave me for the last, but that's fine. To Bob, I want to thank Brown's crew for stepping to the plate and taking care of the issues at Bennett. It looks a lot better, so please let them know that it is noticed. Ron Clark, I don't know if Dr. Hanlon, how you're going to be next year, but again, I heard from the teachers, you know how great it was unto us. I even said to Carl Anderson, I said, "You need to take some of this back to Annapolis." And he agreed, so it was wonderful. And I don't know who come up with the idea, I don't know if it was Mr. Miller or who, but it was great. The downside of this opening week is the issue that happened at Bennett. I'm going to get on my soapbox as Don Fitzgerald Board Member, and I have a feeling all the other board members are going to agree. We're not going to tolerate this in Wycomico County, and I hope the state's attorney's watching, because I want the book thrown at this young man. Here we are, everything's been working great, and we have, boom, three days in, this kind of issue. As where I sit, it's not tolerating, and I know you all feel the same way. It's a shame that we have one person that tears down all this great stuff that's happening in this county, but that the public is watching this board. I think people's the same way as I do, and we're not going to tolerate it. So to let them know, we're going to make your kids safe, whatever we have to do. And the last thing, and I'm going to pass my two minutes, I finally got a surgery date, and this will be my last meeting for a few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Ms. Sowinski?
I attended my first Policy Review Committee meeting, and it was quite an eye-opener, and I hope to attend many more of these meetings. I went to several breakfast meetings. I went to call out the Fresh Start Program, and I was there with several thousand other people. But what impressed me was our principals, vice principals, teachers, and staff members who gave up their Sundays to go there and to hand out the backpacks and the school equipment, and I was very impressed with that. I attended open houses at Pinehurst, Prince Street, Parkside, Bennett Senior, and Bennett Middle. I also went to the 9th Grade Orientation at Parkside. I went to the first day of school, I was in the, at Prince Street, and then in the afternoon, I was invited to go back to Pinehurst. And I also, along with several others, was at Wycomico Middle for the first day of school there to greet those young students. One thing that impressed me at Pinehurst and Prince Street, that these are uniform schools, and the boys and girls all coming to school in their uniforms, but in order, some of the little girls, in order to make it a little different, had these lovely little bows in their hair, and just so that they looked a little different, even though their clothes were like everyone else's. I've had a lovely month and looking forward to September and October.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Well, I guess I realized that school was back in session last Tuesday. I was on Route 50 about 7:30 in the morning, I think I counted 14 school buses. They were coming from everywhere, but it's good to see them running and everybody seemed to have a good start. It's also, I went to the Civic Center when we have the back-to-school kickoff for the kids, and it's great to see all the kids, you know, it looks so good in the brand-new tennis shoes and the backpacks when you see them on the highway or walking to school. In fact, one kid at my neighborhood, I asked him what school he went to, and he said, "I go to Y High." And he said, "I know you." And I said, "You do?" He said, "Yeah, you used to work for the Board a bit." I said, "Yes, I did." And he said, "Do you have any backpacks left?" I said, "I can get you one." He said, "I miss getting a backpack." But I had several at home, so I said, "Come on, go with me," and I gave him one. So kids, they know how to find out things and how to get things done. The other thing that I want to mention is that, I'd like to commend the superintendent and the staff for the job that you have done in recruiting new teachers. It appeared that in that group, there were some seasoned teachers as well as some brand-new ones, but it looks like a good crop, and I'm sure that you will do all that you can to make sure that they are successful and they have a good school year as well as the students. And the superintendent, I think, was good to have your breakfast when you had the kickoff with your administrative staff, because you set the tone for what you are looking forward to in the year, and they also seem to be willing and able to continue to make the things that your vision come true with the kids that we're working with. And finally, one of the things that I think most impressed me is, again, like Don has said it many times, you know, we've only been in school what, a couple weeks, but look what these kids are doing already in the schools and the reports that they're giving to us. And like I said before, it appears that even though we're one county, there are different things going on in different schools, and that kind of makes it a really good mixture of what you can expect and what you see in the county.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Well, as Dr. Hanlon is dinging up here, I'm sure that she's put us all on our two-minute time limit.
Like 60 minutes.
So I will, I will mention that Mr. Murray did one-up me because I only visited 12 schools and not 14, so you win this week. So I will say, I thoroughly enjoyed visiting Parkside. I go up and I go in, and of course, Kim Penny is just wonderful, and she says, "What do you want to do?" And I said, "Well, you got to put me to work, I'm not going to stand here and do nothing." Well, indeed, it took her administrative assistant about 10 seconds to put me at a table, checking papers and passing out schedules, and they had to be a certain way, and it was so welcoming to know that you can go into these schools, not just Parkside, but the other 11 that I've visited, and everyone was so friendly, they wanted to, you know, give me tours of the schools, and they had all positive things to say about our big kickoff, which Ron Clark was amazing. You can see I straightened my hair today because if he likes straight hair, I'm hoping everyone else up here does. So that was absolutely amazing. I do agree, I don't know how, we are going to beat that. It was awesome. Thoroughly enjoyed the breakfast, going to Choices. I was actually invited to come and be another set of hands in a science lab with Mr. Hatton on Friday, so I'm pretty excited about that, so I can use my science skills. I volunteered this week at Pittsville. The 4th and 5th graders were decorating their writing books, which was exciting. We took everyone into the cafeteria, and we gave them massive amounts of supplies that were donated from the public schools. They had purchased some on their own, they had called parents and businesses, and they got to decorate those however they choose, which was wonderful. And the kickoff was fantastic. I'm not sure who enjoyed theirsself more. Principal Har- I'm not sure who enjoyed theirsself more, Principal Harris or myself, as we were passing out glue sticks and pencils, and he's dancing up and down the aisleways. It was it was wonderful. That is an amazing event. Everyone in the community, thank you so much for helping provide that for our students in Wycomico County. And I think that's it. You didn't ding. Oh, my goodness. I think I'm done.
Very well done.
Thank you so much.
So before I have a few comments, I do want to say, we want to wish Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fitzgerald, well in his upcoming surgery. Our prayers are with you. We're going to miss your leadership while you're gone, but I'm sure you'll be able to contact us by email or text, or you'll be, you have a whiteboard written on it, something. So we wish you well, and we're going to miss you. Secondly, no one, I attended a lot of these events with my colleagues. No one mentioned the the event this past weekend, which was, I saw Dr. Hanlon there, was the National Folk Festival. It was a great event for the city and the county. I mean, I saw so many people I knew, including students and many of you. It was a great event. Am I being ding? The watch keeps going ding, ding. So, yeah, that was a great event, and it really brought the city together and members of the county and people from outside the area. I thought that was wonderful. I had a personal experience with the first day of school in that this was the year my oldest grandson went off to kindergarten. He'll soon be six. So the night before, I got to see how back in his backpack, packing his backpack, getting all ready, getting his hair all done. I remember all those days. You had to make sure, scrub them up, hose them off, get them all ready to go to school, right? So he was at our house, and then then he, I got pictures of him on Friday, and he called me and said, Papa, I had a great first day at school, at your school. I said, well, it's not my school. He said, well, my daddy said you're in charge of the schools. I said, well, don't go around telling people that. That's going to get us all in trouble. But he had a great first day at Westside. And then finally, I'd like to say, I was looking for a quote to end tonight, and I'm thinking about the scores and the issue we had at Bennett right away, and I found this quote. It said, "A child educated only at school is an uneducated child." And when you think about, I said it earlier in closed session, when you think about, when they leave our schools, we don't have control over them, but if you're watching this tonight or you watch it later, please read to your student, be involved in what they do, get involved in the school, in their life, keep an eye on them, and then we won't have to be wearing purple for the opioids. We won't have the situations we have at Bennett, and those test scores will go up to graduation rates. It's all about parental involvement. I've always thought that, and I still believe that. So please, on a positive note, take care to see what your children are doing and work with them and be with them and spend time with them, and I think we'll have a much better school system, because these folks are all working very hard to educate them, but we need your help, too. It's a total team effort. So with that, I think we're adjourned, five minutes early.